For the Twinsburg School Board to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solura?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
Okay, being that we're all here, if you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do need to make one addendum to the agenda, in that we are going to be striking the language from I-14 and replacing it with additional language, which I will read when we get to that part in the agenda. Marty, I believe we need to have a motion to change that, so I will go ahead and make the motion to strike the language from I-14 and replace it with the new language that will be read into record.
I will second.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Solura? Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Solura?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion passes. Are there any further changes or additions to the agenda?
Not this year.
All right. Very right. Well, once again, good evening and welcome. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for 21 August 2019, and I am Rob Felber, and I'm honored to serve as your President of the Board of Education. Well, here we are, day one of the 2019-20 school year. Welcome back, our students and staff. We cannot wait until next meeting, when you're back at our regular board meetings, and it always makes it more fun to have the students here. Monday, I was able to greet many of you and spend the morning participating in convocation. We sure had fun with the Wellness Games, especially seeing 75 people compete in the largest rock-paper-scissors tournament I had ever seen. Can't wait to get the next 75 friends together and try to do that. The past six years, I've had a front-row seat to the inner workings of our district, and it has been fascinating, trying, and intellectually challenging time. There are so many moving parts. There is one person that is responsible for much of the operations and all those moving parts, and I can personally attest to just how hard our Superintendent Kathy Powers works on the district's behalf. With 4,100 students, over 500 staff, and a $43 million budget, you can imagine the enormity of the task. What is even more fascinating is our superintendent is being recognized tonight as the top superintendent in Ohio out of 600-plus districts. But do not take our word for how hard she works. Take the word of the independent award panel. And tonight, we're going to welcome Dr. Dan Keenan, Executive Director of the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation, to present Superintendent Powers with their 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. For those present a few months back, I was successful and surprising, Superintendent Powers with the news of her award live during the board meeting, and yes, that was the first time I saw you speechless, albeit just for a few seconds. Tonight, we have -- she may have already figured out there's a little bit more to the surprise tonight, so we welcome those guests that will be joining us shortly for additional accolades. I would remiss in not formally thanking my sneaky partner in today's celebration, Maryann Franco, Superintendent Powers, Administrative Assistant. She -- there you are, my sneaky partner. Now I know if you need to get something done, that's where it goes. But thank you, Maryann, for making me and the board look good. And we will be taking a recess after all the accolades, but at this point, I'm going to ask Dr. Keenan if you'd please join us at the lectern for your presentation.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for taking the time to recognize Mrs. Powers for the work that she does and then nominating her for this award. Certainly an exciting day for the Twinsburg Schools with the first day for students, that's always a thrill, and it's fitting for our foundation to come and honor Kathy at this time because it marks the start of a new and exciting school year. The Jennings Foundation has been around since 1959, and it was started with the generosity of Martha Holden Jennings and her nephew Art Holden, and they set aside $11 million to support Ohio's public school students. And they figured that the best way to do that was to also support Ohio's teachers because we believe that's the core vehicle for student success. Since 1959, the foundation has invested in grants of over $150 million in Ohio schools, and that's due to wise stewardship of those funds and then of the thoughtful mission of the foundation. And as a foundation, we actually do three things. We do the grant-making as described, and then we do thought-partner work, where we work with superintendents like Mrs. Powers, and we honor and recognize educators like we're here to do tonight with Mrs. Powers. So it is really, truly a thrill, and again, appreciate the opportunity to do so here publicly. One of the things that excites me about celebrating Kathy before I read the citation that we're providing her and giving her her award is that I've known her for quite some time as well, and this award was decided by an independent panel. Some were peers, superintendents, others were principals and teachers, and evaluated, as you said, superintendents that come from a pool of 612 districts across the entire state. But I've known her for quite some time as a continual learner. She's been a professional learner for quite some time. In fact, as a teacher, she was a Jennings Scholar, which is tremendous. It says a lot about how you started your career and how you took that aspect of your career. I see her annually in the summer. The Jennings Foundation sponsors a retreat for eighty of Ohio's top educational leaders, and Kathy attends that every year. We hold convenings where we'll do book studies or talk about important topics in Ohio's schools, and we'll bring Ohio's superintendents together with corporate leaders, and Kathy's a regular participant in those and shares valuable perspective and things that are done in the Twinsburg Schools that continue to amaze us with the work. While I knew quite a bit, it was wonderful to look through the application and hear some of the things that took place under her leadership. And the reason that still surprised me, even though I know her well, is Kathy will never say that she has done anything. In fact, in the last three years, she has nominated more teachers for awards than any superintendent in Ohio. Fifteen since 2016 of her teachers have been nominated by her, taking time to write letters and tell us why they're exemplary teachers. Five of those teachers were recognized as top five in Ohio, and many others were honored just because she took the time, as you did, as a school board, to think deeply about their practice and hold them up as models for others. So that says a lot. I also learned that under her tenure, academic coaching was instituted here in Twinsburg. The academy program at the high school was put in place. The district's positive behavioral and structural supports were started and then recognized by the Department of Education. Schools were recognized as Hall of Fame schools, Blue Ribbon schools, National Forum schools to watch, Purple Star award schools, five-star quality preschools, had a kindergarten prep program that was put in place, number of Principals of the Year, and I can only say that as a former superintendent, I was amazed by all of that. And know that Kathy's right in always recognizing it's the students and the teachers that get the work done, but I am also well aware that you have to have somebody in your position and her position that create those conditions for people to thrive, and so appreciate that greatly. So it's an honor to have her as our representative and our model for Ohio's outstanding superintendent. So congratulations on that. What I'd like to do is read the citation, if you'd come up, if it was presented. I also want to note that as part of this process, and probably one of the only ways you talked Kathy into going forward with the process, is Jennings Foundation then awards the school district of the winning superintendent a $10,000 check that goes towards a program, and that's part of the application. So Kathy's application was to support a blended learning program, and really, a lot of it goes to staff development to see that the teachers are best positioned to do that well. And she told a great story at our retreat about how that program was initiated by teachers and how teachers convinced her by just bringing her down and showing the results and the enthusiasm for it, so kudos for that. So I'm going to just take a second to read this. Says the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation 2019 Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award to Catherine M. Powers, Twinsburg City Schools. You are an exceptional leader who keeps the Twinsburg City Schools running at peak efficiency. One of your first tasks as superintendent was to develop a plan to secure the district's financial future. You worked collaboratively with your board and staff and engaged members of the community while devising the new funding model. Your leadership was instrumental in reaching a successful outcome. As a veteran superintendent, you recognize the importance of offering your staff cutting-edge professional development. This provides them with the tools and strategies they need to meet the challenging educational needs. You believe the focus of these efforts must transcend academics and include the areas of social, emotional learning, wellness, and mental health. You contribute to establish -- or you continue to establish new and innovative programs to prepare students for success in the 21st century. These have included the implementation of full-time academic coaches, a workforce development initiative, a kindergarten prep program, the creation of maker spaces in each building, the Tiger Learning Lab Project, which combines active and engaged learning online with similar classroom instruction, is another such example. You value collaboration and communication in all your efforts, and you continually seek opportunities for your own professional growth. Your board president believes you are one of the hardest-working individuals he has ever met. It is our privilege to present you with the 2019 Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. Congratulations.
And I'm remiss about not acknowledging Kathy's husband, Paul, in the front row. Paul's the athletic director for some other school, but he's chosen to skip, I believe, an athletic competition tonight in the house divided to be here tonight. And he's, yeah. Some school uses green in their colors, but I'm sure they're going to lose tonight. Yeah. I do a futon in my office if you need it. Now it's my pleasure to call the Honorable Ted Yates, Mayor of the City of Twinsburg.
You have a nice big table. You can display all these. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here to present a proclamation to Superintendent Powers. My kids were all born in Twinsburg, and we decided early on to make sure they were going to go through our public school system, and this is a weird day for me. This is the first day in like 18 years that I didn't have a kid starting school. So I graduated my youngest last year, and he's off at Mountain Union. My daughter is working in San Francisco, and I have a son doing really well at Ohio State. But the district has provided my kids opportunities that I don't know that they could have gotten anywhere else, so it's an honor for me to be here today and just to recognize the work that our district does, our superintendent does, and our board does. But we have a proclamation from the city, so I'm going to read it. Whereas the administration, council, and residents of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio extend congratulations to Twinsburg's City School Superintendent Catherine Powers on being selected as the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award recipient. And whereas Superintendent Powers began her career as a classroom teacher, eventually transitioning into the role of principal and director of instruction and human resources for a number of northeast Ohio school districts. She sits on numerous committees, including the Alliance for High Quality Education Executive Committee, Greater Cleveland School Superintendent Association, and involvement as a Kent State University Educational Leadership Advisory Council member. Whereas Superintendent Powers has many accomplishments, such as assisting to secure the district's financial future, implementing the district-wide Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program, and adding the kindergarten preparatory program. And what candidates for this prestigious award must have had at least five years' experience as an Ohio superintendent of schools and must have served in their position for at least two years. Further, the candidate must have a master's degree and appropriate certification by the state of Ohio. Along with the award, Superintendent Powers received $10,000 to be put towards the school district, where it will help institutionalize and grow the Tiger Learning Lab Project. And whereas she became superintendent of the Twinsburg City School District in 2011, Superintendent Catherine Powers resides with her husband, Paul, and their dog Tanner. She enjoys gardening in her spare time. Now therefore, I, Ted Yates, Mayor of the City of Twinsburg, express my congratulations to Twinsburg City School District Superintendent Catherine Powers as being selected as the 2019 recipient of the Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. Superintendent Powers continues to serve as a wonderful example of leadership and innovation in our community, and I look forward to many successful years ahead with our schools.
Tim's doing photo ops if you want to. It's also my pleasure now to welcome Walter Hoffman, President of the Council for Villagery Mineville, and also former Assistant Superintendent, Twinsburg City School District.
I'm here actually representing Mayor Alonso, who I think you know thinks the world of you and how deserving you are for this recognition, being recognized the way that we are recognized. You have been very special for this community. Mineville, Twinsburg, and the township are very happy that you're here. I'm also privileged, like Mayor, the mayor from Twinsburg, to have three children have gone through the district, thrilled with it. Everything that happens here in Twinsburg, a lot of it centers right here with the school district, and the job that this district has done for my family, so appreciative. I'd like to also read our proclamation, and again, this is coming from Mayor Alonso, who's sorry he could not be here. He had surgery last week. He made a longer recovery than he thought it was going to be, so I got a phone call late yesterday afternoon asking if I would be willing to come in and do this for him, and I right away jumped out of my seat and said, "Of course, because I think everyone knows how deeply I feel about this district." The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Twinsburg City Schools District Superintendent Catherine Powers has been selected as the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award recipient and is being recognized for her professional accomplishments. And whereas the Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award is one of the highest awards the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation bestows upon an educator. And whereas Kathy started her career as a classroom teacher at St. Monica School, moved to teach at Maple Heights City School District, and was later a principal at several schools within the Maple Heights and Bedford City School Districts. And whereas Kathy continued her career in education as the Director of Instruction at South Yewlinhurst City School District, and subsequently became the Director of the Human Resources in Brexville-Broadview Heights City District. And whereas Kathy has been the superintendent of the Twinsburg City Schools since 2011, and soon after her arrival in the district, Superintendent Powers orchestrated the Twinsburg School District's operational change plan, which was critical, three-pronged approach to securing the district's financial future. And whereas Superintendent Powers has had other notable professional accomplishments, including a workforce development initiative named the Academy at Twinsburg High School, the implementation of a district-wide Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. Now therefore, I, the mayor of Mineville, do hereby recognize Superintendent Catherine Powers for her prestigious award and her dedication to the students of the Twinsburg City School District. In witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand this 21st day of August 2019. Mayor Sam Alonso.
Thank you, Walt, and please extend speedy recovery to Mayor Alonso.
Yeah, I will, thank you.
And now I'd like to call Alex Roth, who is the District Outreach Representative for Congressman Dave Joyce. Want to cheer him?
So first, hello. If you didn't know, our District Director, Nick Seafani, left our office, and I actually work right over there by the Lisas, and I'm very thankful, A, our office is very thankful for how generous the city has been to Congressman Joyce's office and the residents in the southern part of our district. It really is a great advantage to have an office down here to serve our constituents, so thank you to the city. Second, I've been overwhelmed by just the generosity and how much every city official, elected official and employee cares about this town, and it was no surprise when the school board reached out that we found out that you had been nominated and received this award on behalf of the City of Twinsburg. So congratulations on behalf of Congressman Joyce. He sends his regards, and he's not here, but again, thank you. And I will read our proclamation. It is way shorter than the last one.
Wish I could say that about the rest of them.
So in recognition of receiving the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award from the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation, signed Congressman Joyce. Congratulations.
Please extend our thanks as well to Congressman Joyce. Now I'd like to have Waitman Hager, who's President of the Twinsburg Support Staff Association. See you? Yep, there you are. Couldn't see you behind the lectern.
We come as kind of a new work group together, and I graduated from Twinsburg in 1969.
Strike that from there. That won't be on there.
So after many years, we came back, and it has been a privilege to work and to share, and it is just a blessing to know that the school is in good hands, and I think the prime example, and I'm going to read this in a few seconds, but this morning was a great morning, and I wish everyone could be at the different buildings, but one of the needed things this morning that I think education starts with, and that is love. A little second grader got off the bus, disturbed, saw this big building and shaking, and one of the administration that you allowed to come and be part of that this morning, put his arm around her and walked her to the door, and I think that is an example of what every kid needs to see as they walk into a building, and that's perfect, and I thank you for allowing them to do that this morning. As President of the Twinsburg Support Staff Association, I want to commend our Twinsburg School District Superintendent Kathy Powers as being selected for this particular award. It is apparent that Kathy's effort to improve our school district has not gone unnoticed. She works effectively, efficiently, to maintain the highest of standards in education, as well as daily operations of running the school district. While most of us do not see nor know all that encompasses her roles, we do see the results of her effort. The City of Twinsburg is fortunate to have a superintendent who is committed to excellence for both student and staff. This award is rightly, and it's given to you for the areas of leadership and your tireless efforts of making Twinsburg City Schools the best place to receive and education. With sincere appreciation and respect, Waitman Hager, TSSA president. Thank you.
Now I'd like to call Cheryl Wilder, who is Secretary of the Twinsburg Education Association.
Hello, everybody. Congratulations. We actually had to steal this off of your wall.
I was remembering.
A lot of stuff has to go back on your wall.
Yes, it still has. Maryann had it secretly delivered to us. We actually presented this to Mrs. Powers back in May when we first heard of her winning or earning this award. It is earned, and it comes from the TEA, the Twinsburg Education Association. Kim think our president wanted to be here tonight, but with the last minute rush, she couldn't. It's her husband's birthday, big dinner, big family, so, but I'm here. This is a proclamation for Catherine Powers. In the Twinsburg City Schools, each and every day, administrators, building principals, teachers from preschool age to high school seniors, guidance counselors, therapists, support staff, including paraprofessionals, secretaries, cooks, custodial and maintenance staff, bus drivers, work under the leadership of Kathy Powers to help students achieve success in learning. We recognize all the hours spent in her tenure since 2011, working at the state level with the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Legislature, collaborating with teachers, support staff, the community, and the school board to ensure that students have the best opportunities for learning. The TEA would like to congratulate Kathy Powers for her exceptional accomplishment as a recipient of the 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding
Only about halfway, Kath. And now it's my pleasure to call Joanne Shouse, who's President of the Twinsburg Council PTA.
I bring my friends.
That's all right.
Traveling packs. We travel in packs. I'm Joanne Shouse, the Twinsburg Council PTA President. I also have Carrie Juschenko, the Dodge President, PTA President. I have Tina Negrali, the Wilcox PTA President, and Rhonda Crawford, Bissell PTA President, and Shar Denholm is the RBC and High School PTA President. So we are all very thrilled to be here tonight to honor you. We truly do appreciate the partnership that we have with you, and we would not be successful without you. So we have a proclamation. I apologize, it's a little lengthy. Okay. Proclamation from the Twinsburg City Schools Council of PTAs in Ohio PTA District 13, including all of the PTAs, for Catherine Powers 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. The PTA requires educational leaders to unify our community, our schools, our students, and families. We depend on our partnership with our educators in order to maintain excellence in academic and social programming and events in our schools. We look to educators that share the PTA mission, to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Whereas Catherine Powers provided significant direction when we transitioned from a PTO to a PTA organization in 2014, and whereas Catherine Powers continues to help protect our best interests and our 501(c)(3) status by analyzing contracts and guiding us through changes, and whereas Catherine Powers has provided guidance and resources to make sure that our PTAs are operating in alignment with district goals, expectations, and policies. Whereas Catherine Powers has a constant or consistent and impressive presence at meetings and district events, and whereas Catherine Powers partners with us and has worked tirelessly since 2011 to make our school district safe, she has been an effective leader with proven results and has shown her commitment to our kids and our schools. Therefore, we, the collective PTA of Twinsburg, Ohio, recognize our Superintendent Catherine Powers on this 21st day of August in the year 2019 with the highest recognition as a recipient of the 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award, and herewith express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable contributions she has made to the Twinsburg City School District. So congratulations.
Got enough memory in that phone?
I'm good.
Got enough memory?
Well-served.
And now it's my pleasure to call Maria Piaska, Piaske. She is the Youth Service Manager for the Twinsburg Public Library. I know, you're going to need a bigger wall, Kath.
So I'm here on behalf of Laura Leonard from the library. She is very sorry she couldn't make it today because she's at her own board meeting tonight, so. Proclamation reads, whereas the Twinsburg Public Library and the Twinsburg City School District are committed to per- District are committed to providing education and inspiration to all members of the communities we serve, and whereas the future success of our youth is dependent on educators creating dynamic learning opportunities, which Katherine Powers has done by encouraging the Tiger Learning Lab project, the academy at Twinsburg High School, stream programs, and other 21st century education innovations by teachers and administrators. And whereas, under the leadership of Katherine Powers, George G. Dodge was designated as an Ohio school to watch, Wilcox Elementary was selected as Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators 2018 Hall of Fame School, and Bissell Elementary received the 2016 National Blue Ribbon School Award as an exemplary high-performing school. And whereas Katherine Powers has tirelessly traveled to Columbus several times to give testimony to the Ohio General Assembly to improve funding for public school districts and meets with officials to gain equal access for all parents to the school resources. And whereas Katherine Powers serves the community not only in her daily duties, but also by participating in the Twinsburg 200 Celebration, Kent State Twinsburg Academic Center Advisory Board, Twins Days, and the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Katherine Powers recognizes the importance of the partnership between the public school and library and cultivates this relationship. And whereas Katherine Powers has demonstrated her authentic love and care of our community's kiddos. And whereas, the board and the staff of the Twinsburg Public Library wish to congratulate Katherine Powers for being honored with the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. Now, therefore, I, Laura Leonard, director of the Twinsburg Public Library and a Twinsburg City School District alumna, congratulate Superintendent Katherine Powers in her reception of the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award.
And now, it's my pleasure to call Megan Eberhart, who is the executive director of the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, I would like to present this proclamation. Whereas the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce is extremely proud to honor Katherine Powers, superintendent of the Twinsburg City School District, as the recipient of the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. And whereas the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation bestows this prestigious honor annually to an educator who has served at least five years as a superintendent, a minimum of two years in their current position, in supporting their mission to foster the development of individual young people to the maximum possible extent in Ohio's secular primary and secondary schools, and provide a means for greater accomplishment on the part of Ohio's teachers by encouraging creativity in teaching and bringing greater recognition to the teaching profession. And whereas Superintendent Powers has led the creation of innovative programs and partnerships which impact countless young people from Twinsburg and surrounding communities who have gone on to become successful citizens, parents, employers, and employees in Twinsburg and throughout the world. Now, therefore, I, Megan Eberhart, congratulate Superintendent Katherine Powers and take great pleasure in presenting this proclamation on behalf of our members of the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce on the 21st day of August 2019.
Make sure those public pictures come on. Well, as you heard, there's a lot of meetings all on the same day, and the Twinsburg Township is meeting as we speak, so I'm going to ask Twinsburg Board of Education Vice President Tina Davis to read the proclamation for the Twinsburg Township. And everybody that's been up here tonight, don't run away. We're going to have a recess, but we want to take more photos. So, don't leave.
All right. So, I'm going to ditto a lot, well, what was said as far as dedication, the hours, and I know countless hours outside of the regular workday to take care of our district, and it is not unnoticed. I'm taking my glasses for this because this is very small. And as he said, I'm representing the township. A proclamation to honor Katherine Powers as recipient of the 2019 Jennings Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. Whereas this board has a long history of support and partnership with the Twinsburg City School District and its predecessor school districts, and whereas Katherine Powers became superintendent of the Twinsburg City School District in 2011, and whereas prior to coming to Twinsburg, Kathy held many positions from classroom teacher with Maple Heights City School District, principal of Maple Heights, Bedford City School Districts, director of K-12 instruction in South Euclid-Linher City School District, and director of human resources for Brexville-Brookberry Heights City School District. And whereas Mrs. Powers has also served on various boards and commissions, including the Alliance for High Quality Education, Greater Cleveland School Superintendent Association, Ohio Schools Council, as well as Kent State University, Twinsburg Schools Foundation, and the City of Twinsburg's Community Improvement Committee. And whereas since coming to the Twinsburg City School District in 2011, Kathy has implemented the school district operational change plan, along with bringing the academy at Twinsburg High School, implementation of district-wide positive behavior intervention sports program, and the kindergarten preparatory program. And whereas candidate for the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award must have five years of experience as an Ohio superintendent of schools and must have served in their current position for at least two years. The candidate must have a master's degree, be certified by the state of Ohio, and be nominated by their local school board. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Township of Twinsburg, County of Summit, State of Ohio hereby recognizes Katherine Powers for her past, present, and future contributions to the school district and community, and presents this proclamation with pride. This proclamation is hereby presented by the Board of Trustees of the Township of Twinsburg, County of Summit, State of Ohio on this 21st day of August 2019. Signed by Thomas Schmidt, James Balo, and Jamie DeFavio.
It was a long list. Nobody else here with other proclamations? Okay, I'm going to invite the Board of Education to join me for one more. Did I surprise you again? Again. You know how hard that is? Welcome, everybody. Please stick around. We're going to have a brief recess, but we do want to get a kind of a big group picture. Wide-angle lens? All right. This is a proclamation from the Twinsburg Board of Education for Katherine M. Powers 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award. Whereas Katherine Powers has been an enthusiastic and devoted superintendent for the Twinsburg City School District since 2011, and whereas Superintendent Powers has committed to creating and maintaining a great environment for both learning and teaching, and works to forge positive and supportive relationships with community members and other organizations to ensure all students receive the quality of education they deserve. Whereas Superintendent Powers strives to be an example to colleagues, teachers, and administrators alike, inspiring them all with the tireless advocacy for the best interests of the students and the future of the Twinsburg City School District. And whereas Superintendent Powers has enriched the minds of students, parents, teachers, and alumni of the Twinsburg City School District. And whereas Superintendent Powers has an unwavering commitment to all students and staff and to ensuring equity and access to meaningful and challenging learning opportunities for all students. And whereas Superintendent Powers works diligently to earn the admiration in respect of students, colleagues, and community members for her commitment, collegiality, enthusiasm, professionalism, compassion, and hard work. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Twinsburg Board of Education this 21st day of August 2019, that the Board of Education and the Twinsburg City School community takes great pleasure in recognizing the significant professional achievements of Katherine M. Powers as a recipient of the 2019 Martha Holden Jennings Foundation Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award, and herewith expressed sincere gratitude for the invaluable contributions she has made to the city of Twinsburg City School District. And this is signed by all five of us. Oh, absolutely, yes. Before we recess, absolutely. I'm sorry. Hold that thought.
I just wanted to thank everyone. Mary Ann and Mr. Felber, well, I had no idea. I thought it was a regular board meeting and...
There's no such thing as a regular board.
Yes. So, thank you. You know, this morning, out and about with the kids and the staff and administrators and the parents, that's what we're really about, and so I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to lead this exceptional school district. It is a gift, and it's an honor to do my job, and it's all about what happens every day in our buildings, and to see the young ones come off the buses this morning with such enthusiasm and joy, from our smallest kids over at Wilcox to the seniors who were sleepy as they walk through the halls at our high school. It's a great place to be, and your leadership is sincerely appreciated. I'm just so thankful to the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation for this recognition, Dr. Keenan, and so enthusiastic about the opportunity that award is bringing to our schools with blended learning effort. If you haven't had a chance to just learn about blended learning or see what's going on in our school district, there's such innovation and excitement, and the learning is taking a whole new look here in our school district. So, I thank you for your leadership. I thank you for your kindness and support, and I thank all of you for being my family away from home. I thank my husband here, who we don't see very much often. Mrs. Farthing said the other day that I have a photo on my desk, and I said, yeah, that's the only time I really see him on my desk. But Paul's just a tremendous partner in life and supports me, you know, in all that I do so, so I thank you very much for your love and support. Thank you so much, and we look forward to a tremendous school year, and great things are happening here in our school districts, and we just are so enthusiastic and excited about what tomorrow will bring. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy. I hope you all stick around for a few minutes. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, and we have a brief recess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Slera. Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Slera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
We are at a recess. Please join us for refreshments and photos. Well, we do need to get back to our regular agenda, so now, I will...
Reconvene.
We're going to reconvene?
Yeah. Roll call.
And please do roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Slera?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Well, now, can we have a superintendent's report?
Well, good evening, and thank you again. I was, I didn't know that was going to happen, so thank you so much for your kindness.
Surprise.
Yeah, it's amazing. So, Board of Education, it has been a fantastic day. As you know, from my text to you bright and early this morning, the buses got off without a hitch about 5:30, and our kids are in school, and it was a great day. I talked with all five of the building principals this afternoon, and it was an absolutely tremendous day at all five of our campuses. With regard to transportation, the buses were delayed a bit, but understandably so. There were a lot of moms and dads out taking pictures this morning, a lot of construction that the buses had to contend with, and a lot more parents drove their children to school today, unusually. So, we expect the routes to sort of settle down into a routine here as we continue on in the school week and on to next week, too. So, it is a great start to the year, and we have so many great things. As you already know, the Tiger Learning Lab Pilot Project is off and running. Our preschool program is just the best place to be. The students are beginning to come in for classes. This week, the preschool parents will meet with our staff, and then the students will start school immediately thereafter. And our kindergarten children are coming in a few students at a time, having some assessments, getting to know what kindergarten is like, and then next week, they will all be at our schools at Wilcox at one point. Board of Education, as Mr. Felber indicated, on Monday at convocation, we were led by our district wellness committee in our second year of wellness, and this year talks about relationships mattering. And the theme for Monday's convocation were activities related to building a sense of team. And I want to thank Mr. Mark Bendis, our food service supervisor, and the members of our PEA and health staff, who really ran the events for Monday and did a fantastic job, and it was a great way to kick off the beginning of our school year. To that vein, if you can mark your calendars for Friday, September 6th, it is the Second Annual Tiger Wellness Tailgate Party from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. that will occur on Tiger Trail, which is the road that loops around by the Tiger Stadium, and we will have many members of our booster groups there, a lot of fun and fitness activities for everyone. We did this last year. It was a huge success, and that event occurs immediately before the football game against Solon, Solon Comets. So, come on out at 5:00, stay for the game, have some fun, and just enjoy the camaraderie and a part of being a part of the Tiger family. So, we thank again the wellness committee here in the district for planning that event. We welcome our kindergarten children, who would be the class of 2032, and they're super excited. And this morning, when I was at the high school, I saw some of our seniors coming through the hallway, and they walk with such confidence. So, it's fun to see the kindergarten children come in on the one end, and then we have the seniors, the class of 2020, and they are excited about starting their senior year and about making it the best ever. We want to welcome all of our new Tiger families. We have a number of new residents who have joined our school family, and we welcome them and want to pledge our support for anything that they might need. And fall sports are kicking off all over the place. As you know, tonight, our girls, Lady Tigers, are playing the green ladies, I guess, from Aurora High School. And so, we'll see how that will be when I get home later this evening, but, you know, sports are a lot of fun, and the kids just have a great time, and we appreciate all the coaches, as well as all of our advisors that support the activities that run all over the district. Board of Education, our annual introduction of staff members will be at our next meeting. That would be September 4th, and Mr. Solon and the administrative team have worked very hard, as you can tell from the agenda this evening, a number of new staff members, but it will be the next meeting that we will formally introduce everyone to you. We didn't want to do that tonight because it's a long day already, and we thought that it would be better suited to introduce the new teachers and classified staff members to you in two weeks from now. Also, I want to thank Mr. Casey Curtly and the members of our yearbook committee. The yearbook from the 2018-19 year is out. It looks beautiful, and I do have copies for everyone. I forgot to bring them this evening, but you have them at the next meeting. So, we thank Mr. Curtly and our high school students for just once again putting together a wonderful compilation of memories of the last school year. And Board of Education, our Students of the Month and Highlights will therefore begin on Wednesday, September 25th. Since we will have all of our new staff members at the next board meeting, we'll pause on beginning the student presentations until the second meeting in September, which, by the way, is the fourth Wednesday due to some reporting that Mr. Aho has to do in the month of September. So, that concludes my report for this evening, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. We're now at committee reports. Do any of my colleagues have committee reports? Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, on just behalf of the CBCC, Dad's School opening today as well. I talked to Mr. Mangus, and everything went smoothly. You know, all the kids arrived safely, and staff welcomed all of the students. Pretty excited for the school year. Same deal with our students, so I just wanted to make sure that I told the residents and notified them that everything went smoothly into CBCC. So, we have a board meeting next week, so I'll probably be reporting out our next board meeting on how things are going there programmatically.
Excellent. Business Advisory Committee on the 27th? Amanda, are you going to be there? Okay, I'll still be out of town, so.
Yep.
Excellent. Any other committees to report? Superintendent, do you have an administrative report?
We do. Thank you, Ms. Felber. This evening, I would like to ask Mrs. Trappigan, our Director of People's Services, to come forward. Mrs. Trappigan and her office oversee many programs, one of which is our partnership with Beechbrook. And this evening, our Beechbrook social workers, being Mrs. Carrie Tulumino Bell, Ms. Kristy Bluebaugh, and Mrs. Felisa Kaufman are here this evening to present an update regarding...
are here this evening to present an update regarding the 2018-19 school year. We would have done this in the summer, but Mrs. Tullino Bell was happily a new mom. And so, she's now back to work and we're grateful for that. Before I ask them to come forward, I just want to let you know, Board of Education, you know, we, as a school district, were sat in just a couple of weeks back by the loss of one of our alumni. Thanks to these wonderful ladies who came up to the high school and worked and with many of our students and staff members who were having a difficult time dealing with that loss emotionally, everybody seems to be in an okay place at this time. But thank you because you were there, listening, hugging, just being such a tremendous support to so many of our kids. And so, that's one of the reasons why this contract with Beechbrook is so valuable for our school district, because not only do we have the services during the school year, they're here all summertime, too. And you just never know. And thankfully, we're here to help us get over that very rough patch. So, thank you. We're very grateful to you. Ms. Trappigan.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Powers. Yesterday, Mrs. Powers asked, or invited Mrs. Farling, Mrs., Mr. Solon, and Mr. Walker, to, and me, to be her guest on Twinsburg Schools Today Back to School Edition. We shared all of our summer projects and focused on, and our, our summer projects of our facilities. We made sure that we had the right staff in the right position, working with our children, and that our academic program was innovative and preparing our students to meet graduation requirements and post-secondary options. But most importantly, we want to provide a safe learning environment for all of our students. Five years ago, as a district, we recognized the need of meeting our school as a whole child with everything that's going on in our world today. We have a lot of students coming to us with mental health issues. And we knew that if we didn't address the mental health issues, the sec, the academics would come secondary. So, we reached out to Beechbrook to provide school-based social worker help to us to address the mental health, our mental health issues and the drug and alcohol addictions. But over the last five years, I think we can all appreciate that things have changed in our world. And when we turn on the television, we see ugly things happening and to young kids. And for yesterday, in our Back to School Edition, we talked about and discussed our initiative as a school district to address the growing issue of childhood trauma. Last year, we invited Missy, Missy McLean from Akron Children's Hospital to present to our staff on school-based trauma. She was, she's very highly respected in our area and has presented at both the state and local, local levels. Our staff really were very, very pleased at some of the strategies that she gave, she gave us. And they wanted her to, you know, to come back to, to do more in-service for, for us. Beechbrook then brought Mrs. McLean back this, this spring for our families and communities. And also, last year, all our buildings were engaged in a book study on trauma-sensitive schools. And again, this year, all our buildings are reading Fostering Resilient Learners Strategies for creating a tra, trauma-sensitive classroom. And this is what the book looks like. And all of our staff and all of our buildings are doing book studies on this. And what I'd like to do right now is just share two sentences from Chapter Eight. And Chapter Eight is entitled, "The Power of Relationships." Trust is a fundamental part of a healthy relationship. One of the most powerful and rewarding ways we can help our students flourish is to provide the safety of a trusting, healthy relationship. In our presentation tonight, you're gonna see a common thread. And that thread is providing a safe and trusting relationship for our families, our students, and our staff. At this time, Mrs. Powers already introduced the, the social workers. Carrie Tullino Bell is the supervisor of all of our Beechbrook programs. And Kristy Bluebaugh is new to us this year and she will be at Dodge and RBC. Carrie is at THS. Felicia Kaufman is at Bissel and at Wilcox. And in our audience is Mark Groner. He is the Executive Director of Clinical Social Workers at Beechbrook. And he has been very supportive of us. And in fact, this summer, when Carrie was off on her maternity, he came in and actually came in and met with our students. So, a big support and thank you to, to Mark Groner for doing that. And then, last but not least, we're gonna have a special guest surprise for you tonight. So, stay tuned.
I didn't have anything to do with this.
I don't know.
Good evening. Forgive my voice. I'm, I got a cold already for today's call, so. We're really excited to present to you our Year-end Report for 2018-2019 School Year and share with you our goals and objectives for this upcoming 2019-2020 School Year. I think I can say on behalf of my colleagues and say that we are thrilled and excited with our partnership with Twinsburg Schools. It's a pleasure to work here and be here. And we also enjoyed seeing the kids getting off the bus and into the building today. Okay. The first slide we have for you is about the student referrals that we have. It is broken down by each school over the last four school years. You'll see, we did go up last year and then remained just about steady in our referrals within each building. So, we're gonna talk a little bit about the Beechbrook Programs in the 2018-2019 School Year. In terms of program development, we organized, coordinated, and in some case, facilitated a number of different programs throughout the district. We focus a lot on various alcohol and other drug prevention programs and groups, social-emotional curriculum with the Zones of Regulation, and other prevention in terms of mental health awareness, the impact of trauma on education, Tiger Training, Social Skills Groups, and Alternative Discipline. For the alcohol and other drug prevention, we continue to co-facilitate leadership clubs to promote alcohol and drug-free lifestyles. We have the Panda Club at RBC and Youth to Youth at THS, which will continue this year as well. Community Health Centers have helped facilitate the Too Good for Drugs Program for the 7th, 8th, and 9th Grade students, which is all focused on prevention curriculum for those students. And they, these programs were all supported by our Summit ADM School Mini Grants. So, we have a couple of pictures for you guys in the next couple of slides. This is the Youth to Youth Club for 2019. On the left-hand side is a picture of the club meeting at THS with Zach Miley from CHC. We were fortunate to work with him. And then, on the right, the 8th Grade Fair to Promote the Club to 8th Graders is on the other side. This slide is a picture of the board sign at prom for Prom Promise. And then, on the right is the Spring Lock-in Event that promoted the club and engaged in drug-free activities and leadership skills. A little bit more on our alcohol and other drug prevention programming. We also developed and implemented the Cross-Age Mentoring Program at Dodge and RBC and Chamberlain Schools. So, we identified mentors. Carrie worked tirelessly on that to identify students over at THS to be mentors for students at Dodge and RBC. They, they trained the high school mentors and then facilitated the program where they met, well, with one or two students from Dodge or RBC over the next seven weeks while in school. They developed activities for the sessions that were designed to promote their connectedness, that kids had a ton of fun. Program was supported by the ADM Mini Grants as well for Dodge and RBC. We also had the Zones of Regulation, which is implemented school-wide at Dodge. And I'm excited to continue that throughout the next school year as well. So, we did some grant writing and reporting for that. We had the Professional Development Kickoff Days at Dodge, Refresher at Wilcox, and later at Bissel. And then, the Zones of Regulation prevent, Presentation to RBC Intervention Staff. So, we did small group and individual intervention on that front. And for the second year, utilized the Ohio MHAS Grant to purchase classroom break boxes and the Zones of Regulation books. Those break boxes include a lot of really great tools to help children regulate throughout the school day when they come and see us in classrooms. I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Felicia, where you'll be able to meet your guest.
So, it is my pleasure to begin my portion of the presentation by highlighting our prevention efforts. Oh, gosh, nobody showed me.
Oh, just hit the right arrow.
Gotcha. Technology, you know. So, we joined with the other district school counselors in February to present a Safety of Wellness Fair. We contacted local mental health agencies and substance use treatment providers, as well as physical health businesses and providers within the community, so that they could share their information and resources with our families. After the Twinsburg School District brought the Speaker, Melissa McCain, who I've seen like three times, and she's awesome every single time that I see her, we also decided to provide a presentation for district parents in May, just to help them understand trauma and how it can affect students' ability to learn. Something that I worked with my administrators over at Wilcox on was to begin a social-emotional program for the preschool classes. This program was modeled as an extra layer of guidance to help set up the children for learning the Zones of Regulation. So, it helps children to learn how to identify, identify feelings, how to notice their body cues, and how to use coping skills to manage those feelings and those body states. And the way that I do that is I bring a little friend with me to help the kids really connect with the lesson. And so, this is Tiny Tiger. And what I do is I read a social-emotional book to begin a topic, either like on behavior, management, rules, expectations, feelings. The kids are then led through an exercise to get rid of the wiggles, because by then, they are moving all over the carpet. And we get our, our wiggles out. We do some breathing to help calm our body back down. And then, Tiny comes out, of course, the star of the show. Like, they forget about me and it's all about Tiny. I get yelled at, "Hi, Mrs. Tiny," or "Where is Tiny today?" And so, then Tiny comes out and the kids teach Tiny what they learned in the book. And every kid gets so excited. They come up at the end and they give Tiny hugs, kisses. There's a little red spot on Tiny because a friend shared a hand stamp with her. So, they really, they really love her. They really look forward to the lessons. The teachers also really look forward to it, too. But it's a really great setup for our Zones Curriculum, so they know about feelings, they know about their body, and they know coping skills. We have also collaborated with administration to facilitate alternative discipline options, so like after-school detention, summer sessions, to promote positive decision-making and avoid high-risk behavior. At RBC, Social Skills Groups have been led individually and co-facilitated with the school counselors. Mrs. Tullino Bell facilitated weekly individual and group interventions for TAP students and focused on building resilient adolescents. In regards to PBIS, we have been more, we were more formally involved in PBIS Leadership Teams and in their respective buildings. And this included helping the staff to identify how our interventions fit into the PBIS tiers. So, we can, and then also offering like the interventions that can help out with that. So, with after-school detention or disciplinary remediation support, mentoring programs, individual or group interventions, and behavior plan developments. We also attended a PBIS Overview Training with the Twinsburg School Staff in March. During the staff professional development days, we offered a couple of different ways to talk about stress and how to help with stress in the classroom. So, 10 Ways to Manage Stress, we identified all the different ways that you can manage stress for yourself, that your cup is full and you're able to give back to the students. And then, we offered mindfulness in the classroom, which just to show how you can incorporate mindfulness practices on an everyday basis for the kids, help them learn how to manage their own stress by practicing these coping skills. And then, in November, we did the kickoff to Zones Regulation to all the Zones, or, sorry, all the Dodge staff. For the professional development, we did have some great positive feedback about what they found most valuable and why. And so, they did find it useful to learn how to manage stress for themselves and then how they can apply that to their students. And then, they also thought it was great that the mindfulness class gave them strategies that they could implement immediately in the classroom for all the students. This summer, we saw 72 students, grades preschool through 11th grade. It consisted of individual sessions, family supportive sessions, offering any types of in-home support, and giving referral for more intensive services where it was needed. And then, we recognized that the kids were feeling anxious going back to school, lots of worries, lots of questions on their mind. So, we did facilitate transfer sessions for those students, so they could feel a little bit more calm and comfortable with transitioning, especially to a, a brand-new school. Oh, no, it's just, okay, sorry. In, at the end of school, we sent out surveys to all of our students. And so, we did have 145 of our students that we were working with return the survey for us. And again, lots of great feedback from them and how much they feel connected to us. That was very validating to see. And so, a couple of these. We talked about feelings. It helped me a lot. I loved going. It helped me remember good thoughts. Let's see. Ms. Carrie helped with relating to me being upset and to come, and tried to comfort and just help work through the situation. So, very appreciative of our support. And they see us as someone that can help them with those feelings and problem-solving. In May, we did send out report, or surveys to our parents, asking them to respond. So, we sent it out to 204 parents and we had 23 that responded. The ones that did respond, again, very appreciative. And so, the one that I'm gonna read does connect to me, but that's not why I'm reading it. "My daughter has seen counselors in private settings several times and no other counselor has been more open and understanding of our situation than Felicia has. She has truly listened to me, my daughter, and her teacher, and has helped with what my daughter needs, not a general idea of how children should be, the issue I've had with other counselors. She treats my daughter and me as an individual and really cares for her needs specifically. I've been blessed to be, to be part of the team surrounding my daughter." Sorry, a little bit of that got cut off. But I like that one because it shows like I'm working as part of a team. I would not be able to do the job that I can do for our families without the great supportive team that I have at my schools. And I'm sure Carrie and Kristy can attest to the same thing, that we all work together to help support our kids and that the parents definitely can feel that teamwork as a support for them. So, with the parent survey responses, we had 35% of the parents indicate that having contact, that they had contact with us six or more times throughout the year. 66.7% of our parents indicated that their Beechbrook worker was helpful in supporting their child. 57.9% indicated that they were provided with community resources when needed. And then, we had 4.8% of our parents that attended the Wellness Fair and Internet Safety Night, and also the Happy and Whole Missy McLean Event that we had offered. Our parents indicated that they would like to receive more education, excuse me, or information throughout the next school year. And so, some of the things that we're gonna be focusing on how to provide that to them is reducing aggression and anger management, resolving family conflict, peer-to-peer mentoring, behavior management, internet safety, healthy relationships for adolescents, and mental, mental health situations, signs, and symptoms. So, we'll be looking on how we can take that feedback and incorporate what we're gonna help support the families within Twinsburg. And now, I'm gonna have the presentation over to Carrie Tullino Bell. Thank you so much.
Hello again. Thank you for having us here again to report on now our fifth year coming in to your school district. And I am just so, you know, honored that we get, once again, another year to work with your students. You know, it's been great for me because I've been able to see a lot of your students grow. This past class of graduates I had known for four years. And I was just like, what an... And I was just like, what an honor it is that I got to work with them for that long. So, I'm just so thankful and grateful for all of you to have us here, and especially Mrs. Powers. You know, I, I don't know, without your PBIS initiatives being brought into this district, would we be here? So, I'm glad that you chose us. I hope you continue to choose us. And I'm gonna continue on with just sharing a little bit about our staff feedback. So, on May 20th, we did survey our school personnel, and that was all school buildings and all personnel. And we gave an online survey, and we got a 67 individuals responded to that. A couple examples of staff feedback was they appreciated having that extra level of support. I know sometimes the guidance counselors, or, excuse me, school counselors, could use just extra teamwork. And together, we definitely, you know, work together very closely, as do administrations. So, it helps that we're able to talk with our guidance, our administration, and the teachers to kind of give them that feedback about what's going on with the student. They like working collaboratively with us. They like the communication with us and their families that they're working with. Just having that extra resource and a reference, especially in the area of mental health. There we go. So, we have a couple more charts for you on our staff feedback. So, a good chunk of them, I'm sorry, I cannot see that. I think it says 80% are familiar with and worked with us in last year. So, most of us know us by now. They understand our role in the district. As you can see, about 47%, a few, number four means that they agree. Five means that they strongly agree that they understand our role. Then, we asked them the question if they were likely to refer a student to Beachbrook Services. And 45% said they strongly agreed, and 36% said that they agreed that they would do that. In terms of our effectiveness, we had, again, I can't see it, 80% say that they felt that we were effective, very strongly agreeing with that. And then, for reasons that they would be likely to refer a student to us, you see, it's kind of split up a little bit, mostly having to do with family disruption. So, maybe there's a loss of a parent, parents divorcing, any kind of family issue at hand, that's our most likely reason that we would get a referral from a staff. In addition to that, you can see that depression and suicidality is a close, up there at 76%. Of those responses, we also have behavior being a high, high issue, and as well as anxiety. So, you can see, it's kind of split between, you know, all kinds of different things. But those are our top issues there. So, in terms of mental health, family issues, and behavior issues. And behavior can mean a lot of different things. But what we know in the mental health field is that when there's a behavior, there's probably something underneath it. So, our job is to help figure out what's going on with that student that's leading to, you know, a defiant behavior, or an aggression, or an explosion. So, reflecting on all of our information we just threw at you, and there's a whole lot more detail about our student survey in your reports, that we would have been here much longer time if we had gone through all of our student reports, because it's broken down by each school with almost the same questions. So, let us know if you have any further questions on the, the student feedback. But some of our goals and objectives for next, this spring school year, we want, we want to continue to support Wilcox, Bissell, and now Dodge in the social emotional curriculum, the Zones of Regulation. Also, I would say, you know, we, we've involved RBC in the high school. So, my job is to get the high school intervention staff with the training on that as well for this year. We would like to assist in continuing to implement the grant-funded alcohol and drug programming that we've, you know, been working really hard to develop over the last several years in a, in a very robust program that hits on a lot of different ways, as Christie mentioned about the camp program. So, last year was kind of our first year doing it, so we had seven weeks. And I'd definitely like to, and I know the RBC staff and the Dodge staff share my, my goal of making this a more, a larger program, extended program. So, we'd like to do a couple sessions in there, maybe have some other mentors from RBC, like develop them into mentors as well, not just high school students, so they can kind of follow the younger students as they come up to the high school. So, we did, we did see a lot of positive feedback from that. We were, we did see a lot of change. You can also reference in the Twinsburg City Schools Today Summer Edition. I interviewed my students from that, and so that was really great to be a part of that, too. We'd like to continue to partner with the district to better connect and serve our families, and really maintaining that contact with our parents is really crucial to us. I know sometimes we haven't gotten a whole lot of feedback from our parents in our surveys, so we're trying to troubleshoot, how can we better get in touch with them so we can get more feedback from more of our, our parents in the district? We'd like to continue to cooperate with our administration, counselors, and teachers to identify any students that might need our services. You know, in terms of our numbers, it kind of held a little steady, because we have students that either, you know, move out of the district, or they do well, and they don't need our services so much anymore. Or they graduated, and they're doing great that way. But we always know that we'll get some more in, so we're constantly having this flow of students work with us. And we'd like to partner with our individual buildings on addressing the, in the area of school trauma. And when I heard that we were doing this book study, and that we were having Missy McLean last year, I was so excited, because trauma, as Mark and my, my colleagues would agree, trauma is our jam at Beachbrook. So, we appreciate that you guys are cognizant of that issue and that you're willing to educate your, your staff about that, because we understand that connection and how it so greatly impacts not just our students, but our families, too. And that's, it can a lot of times be generational. So, you know, just helping our students from when they're early to understand what that is and what's going on, and they can better understand how to control how they feel about that, and it doesn't impact their learning as much. And then, lastly, based on our parent feedback, we, we want to drive our individual and group interventions mainly towards anger management strategies, because that was one of the biggest things that they wanted to see come up next year. And then, we have a couple programs and initiatives we were talking about over the summertime and before the end of the year, one of which is Flip It. It's an evidence-based behavior management strategy to help children identify their feelings, learn healthy coping and self-control, and reduce their challenging behavior. It is for ages three to eight, right? Okay, thank you. Felicia's in charge of this one, because she's, she brought it to me, actually. She had gone to a training, and she has the book on it. So, we're working with the folks from Deveraux to find a way that we can get our staff trained and, you know, bring that sort of approach. It does align with PBIS. It does align with the Zones of Regulation. So, it all kind of ties together. Another one was NAMI, Ending the Silence, was actually something Dr. Hebert had heard about and asked me to follow up on. And then, I reached out to NAMI Summit County, and Ron Rhett over there, who I've talked to a couple of times, he's a great guy. He was there for our Mental Health Fair. Was so excited that he was like, "I gotta tell you about this program, Carrie. We, we gotta get there over to Twinsburg." So, it's a free presentation that they do in the health classes, or they can do in bigger groups, too, but where they talk about mental health, and they educate our students about, you know, warning signs for mental health. And then, you know, what can you do about it if you yourself are struggling with a mental health issue, or if you have somebody in your family? Because NAMI is great about education, peer-to-peer or family-to-family. So, we're gonna utilize that resource very heavily. I use them for a lot of different information. And then, lastly, the vaping intervention program. So, we have this great partnership with Community Health Center in Akron, and they have some great people that help us with a lot of this prevention programming. I come from a background of intervention for alcohol and drugs, not prevention. So, the last couple of years, I've been learning a lot of what prevention looks like, and it can be a lot of different things. But when we looked at the data, and myself and Zach Miley, and unfortunately, Zach Miley doesn't work for Community Health Center anymore, but we talked about how we see a lot of vaping issues coming up in both RBC, but mostly at THS. And on the whole, we don't have high numbers in alcohol and drug offenses. It is the tobacco issue, and it's not actually tobacco. So, we're not seeing cigarettes or other type of products. It's vaping. So, we saw a very big increase in that over this past year. So, we want to work with them to see if we can partner with them to address this issue and come up with some alternative discipline strategies. So, more to come, but we're hoping to get these ideas and, and programs off the ground this next coming year. In summary, there was 300 students that we worked with over the 2018-19 school year. We continue to support the students and their families through our individual and group interventions. We continue to support the district staff with our professional development and our initiatives in the schools. And we presented a lot of prevention programming in a lot of different ways to the district, using Community Health Center, using our grant funds to get a lot of these projects off the ground. So, that is all we have for this presentation. And again, I want to thank you all for having us here tonight to address you. Congratulations again, Mrs. Powers. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Questions from my colleagues?
I don't have a question, just a few comments. You know, I think it's, you know, pretty significant that when you've been here, you know, working with us for five years, you know, throughout that time period, you know, I think it's just commendable, you know, for the board that preceded me, and also us, and the superintendent and administration, to recognize the need to address the non-academic barriers that our students encounter. Oftentimes, you know, we hear about things that we do and tools that we buy to assist students, you know, academically, and make sure that they have all of these tools and things like that to put them in a position to experience 21st century learning. But not enough focus, I think, as I've worked with a lot of school districts around the state, much less in the region, place a lot of focus on the non-academic barriers. So, I know that a lot of districts don't have these resources that allow them to do that. Secondly, the fact that we've been able to integrate this component and your, your resources into our PBIS framework, you don't see that very often, either. And the fact that you guys are able to be flexible and adapt to the framework and the various tiers of intervention that are laid out for PBIS, I think is really important. We've been doing that over a few years. And I've been quite impressed with a lot of the data and results that you guys have been able to present to us. And I always look forward to continuing to do that, because we hope, we keep going deeper and deeper. And, you know, the innovation is always there. It's interesting that you should bring up the social emotional aspect, because I know that the governor's most recent budget speaks to this, and there are some dollars that have been committed to this. So, the fact that we've been doing this well before, you know, anything legislative has, has been proposed at the state level speaks to the fact that we know what we're doing. We know how important it is, and we're ahead of the curve. So, you know, from a contractual standpoint, when you guys, when your contract comes up, I never have any, you know, any, any issues with committing the resources or continuing to commit the resources for having you guys in the schools, because you are so integrated within the fabric of what we do. The relationships that you've been able to build with our students is significant. A lot of student behavior doesn't happen because of the relationships that they're able to foster with adults. So, you guys have been able to do that over an extended period of time. I'm happy with the results. I'm looking forward to some of these other things that you're proposing to do, because we can't be stagnant. You know, you have to continue to look at research-based practices, continue to monitor what's going on real time. And you put us in a position to be able to provide resources or adapt and be nimble enough to address some things on the fly. So, I appreciate all that you guys do. And, you know, we look forward to, you know, what you guys have in store for this coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Other comments?
We, we talk a lot about, you know, knowing, you know, serving the whole child, bettering the whole child, and knowing each child's story. And that's big in the district. Superintendent pushes that. It gets pushed down to each building, teachers and staff, you know. And you're a big part of that. You know, I've been, you know, happy to see this presentation from this seat, you know, for the past four years. Well, one of the things that I think is, is good is, you know, your data continues to come back. You continue to get more responses every single year that you're doing this. You're, you're actually getting a greater response rate from the individuals that you're serving. And you're actually taking that information, and you're using it, and you're bettering your program. The fact that, you know, we're able to expand some of the offerings through grant dollars and partnerships, you know, both that the district has, with Summit County ADM as well, and you, you know, to be able to expand those services. You know, a lot gets talked about, about, you know, expenses and what we're spending. And, you know, I know my colleagues up here, it's a big, big important thing that every dollar that we spend, you know, we want to make sure it has a direct impact on the classroom. And I think, you know, your contract through the past years, this year, and continuing, not only directly affects the classroom and the students, but the staff as well. Because, because, you know, having you in the buildings and able, and able to, you know, take some of these students to the side, help them address the issues, help them, you know, become better performers in the classroom, better, better helpers, better friends, better classmates. You know, that, that has a trickle-down effect on the teachers, on the rest of the students in the class, or even those students that you aren't touching, you know, that are in the classroom. Those, those students are being directly impacted by the work that you're doing with the students, those 300 students that you're serving. You know, so I think that, 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 you know, gets kind of overlooked sometimes as the greater impact. You know, you're touching more than just those 300 kids. You're touching our entire staff. You're touching every single kid that's in a classroom with those 300 students. So, I appreciate it. You guys are always improving, and the fact that you're self-aware to see where you need to expand and improve on from year to year, I think is, you know, a compliment of your organization and the staff that you bring into our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, too.
And I, just the same as they said, I just want to thank you for all your, you know, work and dedication to our students. And I know the beginning of the year, they're very much, especially if they're transitioning to new school, they're very much overwhelmed, a lot going on. They're so busy that they might not even sometimes know what's available to them. And it might be, I don't want to use the word fun, but I know, I think RBC and Dodge sometimes, or they do video announcements, it might be, need to have a, like a little commercial for you guys on there.
I like that. I did speak to the incoming ninth graders at orientation, so y'all know me now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for being there. I, along with my colleague, Mrs. Davis, were, were there when this started. And a lot, you know, I put this along the lines of the same decision we made with academic coaches. We didn't know, or we didn't know, or we didn't know, you know, academic coaches wasn't a unique process. Other schools, it said, "We do this, we do that." Nothing was working. That program worked. This has been tremendous, the reporting that you continue to give us. What would keep me up at night is, is where would all these people be getting these services? And, you know, it's, as Mr. Slur said, it's, you know, it's about the whole child. But, you know, if the things are happening in the family, you know, that are preventing learning and such, there's so much going on in this world. If we could all just turn off CNN, you know, for a day, there's so many things that, that can be affecting. So, I'm glad that we're, we're doing the book initiative. What was the book they did last year, was it?
Trauma Sensitive Schools?
Yeah, Trauma Sensitive Schools, so that, you know, the, you know. And as Mr. Curtis said, that, you know, we did this before it was fashionable, you know, before the current administration decided to legislate it. And we always know how, how well when the legislators decide to say, "Do this," how well that goes. And we were doing it way before. So, thank you to you and your team, and to the colleagues that have worked with us. Very tremendous support, and, and the numbers just keep getting better, at least from the, the depth of, of what you're bringing to the program. So, thank you.
Thank you, too.
Other comments, questions?
Thank you. Congratulations on the baby. Welcome back.
It's a girl. She's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at remonstrance. And persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card, as often found in the lobby, to the treasurer prior to the meeting, so that they may be recognized by the board president and welcomed, make comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the board has opportunity to cite them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent. And although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes until the time of 30 minutes is used. And each person addressing the board is asked to give his or her name and their address. I have one card. Do you have any more?
No.
Okay. Then, at this time, I'd like to ask Adrian Gordon to address us.
Hi, Adrian Gordon from 8025 Mega Meadow. So, really quick, two items first. Congratulations, Mrs. Powers. Huge celebration today. It's a lot of stuff going on. So, you may know I actually put in to run for school board. And anyone who knows me a little bit knows that I'm very passionate about education. It's in my blood. and decided he was going to get out through education, so. So, that being said, that's why I'm here, we've got really cool things happening, and I just want my chance to be up there. And so, that being said, I need to be on an even playing field. So, I did put in a public records request 10 days ago, and I've also talked to some other agencies and pulled some other public records requests, 10 days is kind of long. I get you guys are starting the new school year, right, and Mr. Aho was on vacation. That being said, I've been advised that I just need to get it on record. So, if we want to be on an even playing field, I need to be able, just to catch up, everything I'm looking for is just the stuff that you guys see every day, right, so, just to be fair. And then the second is why I'm here. So, I've been encouraged because of my passion about education and my professional experience to offer the district some things that some people in the community feel like are missing. And one of them is specifically around communication. So, I wanted to point out, today, the agenda was put out at afternoon, after 12 o'clock. The city has a protocol on council that they will always get their agenda out at least 12 hours. So, I did watch it today, so it was out there around 12:30, and on the agenda is about $836,000 of potential spend for this year. I'm not disagreeing with some of the contracts that are going to be voted on, I think some of them are necessary, and some of them are good. I love the Beechbrook presentation today, some of the surveys they're doing, that's the kind of communications that's really awesome. But what I do think, that the people who've asked me to get up here and put myself out there, what they're looking for is the ability to engage with you guys on things like this. And so, I'm just going to ask that with that kind of spend, because that's not a small number, I think everybody agrees, $836,000 is a big spend tonight, that we put it through the standard process. So, contracts of this size, can we put it through the Roberts Rule of Order, the three passes, so that people who want to have a say can actually have a say? And that's all I'm asking for. So, I'd encourage the board to make that commitment, because that's really what people want, they want to be able to hear the review, and they're going to learn more about the services that you're offering, right, on these contracts, so it's a, it's a win-win. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to H, Actionized Personnel. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read H1, 2, and 3 together. H1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for H1, 2, and 3 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis, I'll go, am I right here? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Further comment? Roll call.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and H1, 2, and 3 pass, if they're all. I will now read I, 1 through, what do we have, 14, and there will be, again, replacement language on I-14 when we get to that. I1, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the donation from Kent State University, Twinsirk, Ohio, to the Twinsirk High School in the amount of $750 for the sponsorship of the Academy at Twinsirk High School's kickoff event scheduled for September 11th, 2019, per the attached exhibit. 2, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the Twinsirk Tigers athletic pass prices for the 2019-2020 season, per the attached exhibit. 3, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the settlement agreement, release, and waiver for transportation expenses for one student receiving special education services outside the district, per the conditions outlined in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. 4, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the 2019-2020 Activity Advisor Handbook, as sent to the board under separate cover. 5, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves an agreement with the Beechwood Board of Education for the admission of one student for the purposes of special education services for the 2019-2020 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. 6, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the superintendent's agreement for free attendance with the Medina City Schools for one student residing in Twinsirk to attend the Medina City Schools for reasons deemed appropriate for the 2019-2020 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. 7, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement with Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for one student to attend the passport program, school program for the 2019-2020 school year at the cost of $55,043.31, that's $288.89 per day, for 179 days, 17 hours of speech therapy at $60 an hour, 34 hours of OT sources at $68 an hour. This is a general fund expense, as sent to the board under separate cover. 8, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for a teacher visually impaired for up to 50 hours at a rate of $97 per hour, an educational audiologist for up to 45 hours at a rate of $91.63 per hour, a teacher of hearing impaired for up to 80 hours at a rate of $87 per hour, and an orientation mobility trainer for up to 10 hours at a rate of $72 an hour for the 2019-2020 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. 9, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the internship field experience agreement with Kent State University for interns, field experiences for students enrolled in Kent State University School of Health Services, Sciences, rather, athletic training program for a period up to five years affected 2019-2020 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. 10, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves a contract with Beechbrook, Cleveland, Ohio, for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, July 1st, 2019 through June 20th, 2020, total cost not to exceed $211,192.0, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. 11, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the deletion of inventory of the play clocks that are no longer working, inventory tag 015510 and 015509. 12, release, oh, I'm sorry, resolve the Twins Board of Education approves a release of transportation for three students from the Solon School District, as sent to the board under separate cover. 13, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement for occupational therapy services and consultation from Cinderell Therapies for the 2019-2020 school year. Services provided by an occupational therapist will be billed at $68 an hour, and services provided by an occupational therapy assistant will be billed at $53 an hour, not to exceed $305,875.0 for the 2019-2020 school year, and an additional $17,272.50 from carryover services for the 2018-2019 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. And finally, I-14, Agreement Solutions Behavioral Consulting. To the extent consistent with the state law, resolve that the Twins Board of Education approves the agreement for behavioral intervention services with Solutions Behavioral Consulting, LLC, for the period of August 15th, 2019 through September 23rd, 2019. Consultation services will be $150 an hour, and services provided by behavior technicians will be billed at $45 an hour, not to exceed $265,000. This is both a title, 6B, and general fund expenditure. Do I have a motion for those 14 items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Slurr, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Discussion? Comments? Anything particular, Mrs. Powers?
Just so you know, the, the price of the athletic passes is not increasing, it's the same as it was for the 18-19 school year, and new this year is the Activity Advisor Handbook. We have been trying to formalize all of our handbooks, and we've had a coach's handbook for a couple of years, I asked Mr. Fantone to work to create an Activity Advisor Handbook, so some things are specific to the activities advisors, such as information about copyrights that you wouldn't find in a coaching handbook. So, I appreciate his effort in getting that before you this evening, so that will then become standard when we bring all the other handbooks in May of every year, this one will, will join suit with the other ones, too.
Excellent, I appreciate the efforts on getting those put together.
You're welcome, and the rest of these are just really contracts to support what we do here for the current school year.
And some of the mandated things that we have to by, by law. Okay, further comments? Roll call.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And we're at miscellaneous, no more surprises, I promise, that I know of, although I would like to be able to pull a tiger out of a bag. That was, that was pretty cool. Anything miscellaneous from my colleagues?
Just another congratulations, Superintendent Powers, I know, we, we said it at the beginning, you've got a table full of proclamations here, but your leadership and guidance to the district, the team that you have assembled underneath you, both in the administrative offices, at each of the buildings, and the staff and the team, and each one of your administrators and principals in buildings have assembled, truly, I think, you know, over the past eight years, has brought this district into, you know, the forefront of excellence in education. I think that shows with all the awards that the buildings have received, various teachers, various principals, and tonight yourself.
Thank you.
You know, so, that is definitely, you know, a team effort here, and through your leadership and guidance, has gotten us here to where we are, and, you know, as board members, we rely on your leadership to continue to improve the district, and, you know, we give you the tools to operate it on a day-to-day basis, and myself, speak on behalf of my colleagues, I think, you know, given this, examples tonight, has put us in a real good place, so I appreciate that, you make us all look good up here, and continue doing what you're doing.
Yeah, congratulations. Any other comments? My colleagues?
Just add that I think what's significant about the award is that it's a recognition from your peers, a lot of your peers, and these are people that have been in the job, they understand what it entails, they've sat in the seat, and I think it's, I don't know, I mean, it's, I think it's a pretty weighty thing to be acknowledged as the top from a lot of people that have been doing this a long time. It's hard work, it's not your typical nine-to-five, for sure, you work a lot of days, a lot of hours over and beyond, you know, a traditional workday, and sometimes the job can be pretty thankless. So, getting an award like this, especially from, you know, somebody like Dr. Keener and, you know, other folks, I know a lot of different superintendents, you know, it's, it's huge, I can understand it, so I, I know how overwhelmed you, you probably feel, and just, you know, being chosen and being even considered for it, so much less getting it. The fact that you're tearing a little Twinsburg, I think is a pretty big deal, a lot of our buildings have gotten recognitions, state and national, so this on the heels of other awards that our buildings and our principals have gotten, I think it's just icing on the cake, so congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, I appreciate it.
And 10 grand more for blended year learning?
Yes.
So, it's, it's nice when they come with a prize money.
Yeah, right.
Very good, congratulations, and anything further?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we do have need for executive session, so I will make the motion that the board enters into executive session at 9:00 PM to discuss the employment compensation and/or discipline of public employees as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. I've made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Slurr?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
The board is now in executive session, and we do not anticipate new business when we reconvene. Thank you.